Good evening.
Hello.
How is everyone this chilly evening? Okay, first order of business is public participation. Okay, Chris Sartell, I saw your hand first.
Yep, last two weeks ago I wasn't able to make the meeting, but I asked Wanda to speak up about trying to have a speaker come to the school to talk about just being kind in general instead of using the bullying, because that doesn't seem to be, you know, coming with the kids to understand. The guy asked about, had been to WA for two years, seemed to have kept the seniors and the older kids, really bragged him up, he thought he was great. And I was just wondering what was going on with that, because we had another incident last night. I know it wasn't during school time, but it was kids from Lebec School. And I have messages saved telling my son to take his life, he was a C.U.N., you know, just... And I wanted to know what was... and I talked to some businesses and they said that they would be willing to stop off and donate money and it was just an issue of money. Why we couldn't get this guy to come down to talk to the kids? And I found out also that he does elementary too. It might not be a full day like he does at WA, but it'd be like a half a day like he was at high school kids. Because I'm scared, and this is the second time with my child that I know of, that these things are happening. And they're happening with other children too. And I just want to try to come up with something so we can maybe...
What was this gentleman's name again?
His name, yeah, Michael J. Chase.
The nice guy.
The nice guy or something along those lines. Yeah, I have his contact information. And at the meeting I believe that I was the two, you have the information too and Wanda does.
One, Wanda mentioned that he's patient with the lab.
But you said that you were gonna look into it. So I just was wondering what was going on with that, just because of this latest incident that happened with my son.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything going on, because we could discuss it and you haven't brought it up as a board subject.
Okay, is there any way that we could, you guys could do that so we may try to get on that?
I could check into it and find out what the whole deal is with that. Question to you, have you contacted law enforcement on the issue you had?
No, because my son is scared because it's kids at the school and at another school, that there will be repercussions when he comes back to school with these kids that are doing it, that are making smiley faces when you got this kid telling my son to take his life. And it's gotten completely out of hand.
I think that the situation you're describing was after school and not in school right now.
No, but these kids go to be back, so that's why I was hoping that maybe...
But what I'm saying is the situation you're describing happened outside of school.
Yeah, it did last night, yes.
And I believe you should probably contact law enforcement just for that reason, because it did happen out of school and see what law enforcement says about that.
Oh yeah, I have everything saved, you know, pictures and... But I would just, I just want to try to get at, to try to talk to these, find some way to get to these kids, because it's affecting my son, it's affecting other children that are being told this by these same group of...
My son was the one who brought it forward to me, he come to me.
Okay, hold on a minute, hold on, hold on a minute, one more time.
Yeah.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll have, you know, we'll look into, you know, what his whole thing is and stuff like that. I understand there's a large fee to do this.
Yeah, that's why I kind of went and I asked businesses, you know.
I believe at the last meeting it was discussed that there were federal funds that could be used, that you, oh, Mr. Johnson had mentioned, that there are funds that can be used into that. And I thought maybe there was supposed to be some checking into that. This is something, I've had several people come to me that are very positive about this. I'd like to see this sort of fast track if possible. Can we, can we check with funds?
Okay, so a couple of things, I did check into the availability of Title 1A funds. We use, we use all of our Title 1A monies for teacher salaries, in this case the Title 1A teacher that we have. However, generally speaking, with the overall size of your budget, and I'm happy to say we haven't had too many surprises this year that would result in an unexpected expense. At the last meeting I believe the amount of $3,500 was quoted as a fee for this gentleman to come. As your superintendent, I can tell you that if this is something the board votes to have occur, I can find $3,500 in your budget to make it happen. Money is not an obstacle. To me procedurally, if this board votes and says, "Mr. Superintendent, make this happen," it can happen.
And it might not, and that looks like a full day at WA, you know. And if he only gets half day for elementary, I don't, you know, that's what I was told. So maybe it might not be that much if he's only coming. But I know that two of my high school kids came home, you know, I have freshmen and seniors that last year came home and this year, you know, saying positive things about this guy. It wasn't like a day of, "Oh no, we have to sit here and listen to this, you know, guy talk." They both came home discussing very positively about this person and how friendly he was and how he, you know, really was really good at what he did. And for an 18 and 15-year-old, for you to hold them all day, a bunch of them, that's, to me that speaks a lot. And he is, he writes books too, he's an author, he has books out there. And he also, as YouTube videos could have launched a few. But maybe coming out and bullying isn't working.
Do we have information on the program that he has?
Not specifically, both Tina and I spoke with the assistant headmaster from WA. I reported that at our last meeting. But if you're talking about a brochure, a bio, a general description of the types of services gentleman could provide, I do not have that information, but something tells me I could probably get some further information.
We'll get some further information and give that to the board and we'll put it on for an agenda writer and look at, and see if it's possible to get him in here and see if his services, you know, might be used here. It might, might... Hold on, so this way here we can put it on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. And, I mean, if there is a fee and stuff like that, appropriate, you know, the right type of money to get this done, so. Mr. Sartell.
I like, well, I like the saying about a different approach, because the bullying thing, you mentioned bullying, it seems to really stick. It's just something different, another way maybe to get to kids and stuff. Because we've been having a problem for a while. I mean, it did start on the bus, which was school, because there was a video of it. On the bus, one person's filming while the other person goes over and slaps him in the face. I mean, that's just, you know, I don't know where I'll leave this to meet and went on to that. But obviously we knew what was gonna happen, although someone wouldn't be filmed and he's waiting for it to happen, right?
Of course I've heard about it, so.
Yeah, I wanted to say, you just talked about, I did, I didn't tell you guys, because my son's one of the people with these Snapchat messages that showed me. And I was concerned that my dick part had, which takes me to all of them. You know, "You should die," things like that, from another child within Mr. Johnson's district, at another school. I did call law enforcement, I never told them that. But yeah, I obviously did say the school, that I lied on the first school, whether it happened within or without, outside of school. I knew that was, yeah, no, I didn't, I did call, you know, it was scary. You know, you're talking about these times in the world where things are happening and, you know, it needs to be addressed. I mean, Ryan is no longer within the school system, but he's still being affected. He's been prayed and skid for his friend, because his friend reached out to him, said he was sad. And yeah, I read it all and the kids' names on there. And I have all Snapchat, I love six of them, and very obscene words that a 13-year-old shouldn't be saying. Saying things about his mom and dad, yeah, and some of them go down.
And this happened where?
Uh, I don't want to give out names of the children under, you know, 18.
No, where? I am not asking to be...
Oh, my son has an iPod, you know.
Where did this actually happen that he has pictures of this? Was it on school property, on a bus, or?
No, at home, at home. But I did talk to Sharon, Ryan, over in the chat, and they both need to approach the school and see if it could be resolved, I mean, because there shouldn't, you know, if there were to be repercussions. He said if it did accelerate, he did not have a problem going to the child's, yeah, child's, he was speaking up. But he wanted to see if he dies at the school, the board member could do something, you know, within the other school too. If you need the information, I've got it. It's just, my son's being affected too and, you know, he, I'm glad he spoke up and some of the folks that have been dealing with it, not with his medical or anything, but I just think it's an issue that needs to be resolved and not discussed.
So this, so this is something that's happening online?
Yeah, it's cyberbullying, whatever you want to call it, I don't know what it's called at this point. But I mean, if another child is gonna die, it's not, whether or not, some other choice, words, I don't know.
I believe we have something, policies about cyberbullying, correct?
But I think what Trish and I were praising, you know, we're talking about an iPod, so if there are any programs you can bring into the schools to talk to the student body, how important it is, kids with disabilities or special needs, you know, what they go through daily. There is a movie out there called Wonder that schools are releasing and having all of this been involved in watch. Staff, local staff, administration, whatever, that's involved with these kids. And realizing that, you know, a special age child goes through what they go through every day. They want to be accepted into the crowd and you have other children constantly bullying them and then sending them messages and telling them to go die. That's a little extreme. I do believe that the school board and the school itself should step up and, you know, try and resolve this. Whether it have to do with...
Well, I was gonna ask Mr. Johnson, if the law enforcement is telling her, contact the school. Has this happened in other schools and how do we get resolved than that? If the law enforcement is indeed saying, you need to involve the school.
So a couple, a couple of things immediately I would say. The law enforcement is, law enforcement officer, I don't know who you spoke to and I don't, I don't need to know anybody's name. The law enforcement officer is generally correct, there are some limitations, but he's generally correct. Because if an incident occurs outside of school, the question that school officials have to ask is, is it having an effect on the students' performance inside the school?
Yes, it does.
And if the answer is yes, then the school can take some measures. Part of the challenges that school, that school, that a school would face is if the alleged bullying activity is taking place outside of the school, we need to be able to gather some evidence. And it sounds like based on what folks are telling us here, that there is some evidence out there available. We need to see that. So if you have copies of Snapchats, whatever the case may be, you need to give that to school personnel so we can conduct an investigation. And part of the investigation, the types of questions that we would ask, the alleged victim, and I'm not mentioning any names here, we speak to their teachers. Have you noticed a change in their performance, either academically or otherwise? Are they visibly upset? What's their attendance look like? Are there any other signs of behavior being different than what the teacher is accustomed to seeing? That's the type of investigation that would follow. So there are things that the school can do. It's not the typical bullying investigation by any stretch of the imagination, but it's also incorrect to think that the school cannot act.
The first incident that happened on the bus with my son, he was scared to come forward. And I have the picture of the handprint on his face. We, he went, a parent saw it at a birthday party, a public birthday party, of the video of my son being hit. He was sitting there on the bus, the school bus. Girls came, one of them had him, he had one video taped it. He didn't want to say anything because he just started lighting the school bus again. And it's always his word against a group. So when the parent called me the night of the birthday party, who's not a friend of mine, just an acquaintance, this is a small town, everybody, and asked me how my son was, I had really no idea what she was talking about. And she said, "You know, this, these group of girls showed it at the birthday party and thought it was hilarious."
Was this incident brought up to someone at school?
On Monday, when we went to school, we went, met with Ms. Wormel, being disgusted. And the child that hit mine, for short, she said, came forward. I have no idea, I haven't heard anything what happened with the child that videotaped it. So we kind of just let it. But then when Ellen called me last night and said, "They've seen, you know, we're at him again." And so, you know, we didn't, Ellen said, "Go calling," and I'm like, "No." Because it wasn't during school, it was after, and I didn't know. And our son doesn't want the repercussions that come with it, for being called a tad of tail and, which he had to after the bus incident. But that's why I thought maybe we talk about bullying and my son has been wrote out for a break of bullying last year. So it's hard for me, you know, to say anything.
Well, I think we need to, I mean, as far as if you have further information.
And I don't know what happened to the video. I don't know, I don't know what happened to the video. I didn't want to see the video of my son being hit. And I don't know what happened to the video of it. But I know, and the parent told me when we talked to Ms. Wormel, that I could use her name, that she'd be more than welcome to say what she saw in the video at the birthday party of my son being hit. But I'm sure the video was wrong gone now.
Ms. Wormel? This is, this is ongoing now?
I addressed the path that Chris brought to me, students have served their consequence. It starts from, I spoke when it happened. What she's talking about last night is brand new.
Yeah, I didn't, she doesn't know anything about it because it's just last night. And it wasn't during, it was, you know, in the evening. So I really didn't think the school had, but when the issue was brought up on the school bus, then we did come and she did handle it. But he wants proof that the video, I'm sure, is, these girls are, that's probably dog.
Yeah, so, right, so when I say, "I need some evidence, I need some documentation," the original incident you're referring to that happened on the school bus, I am aware of that. As Ms. Wormel has indicated, that was addressed. However, what you and Ellen are describing is an incident after that. So what I'm saying is, you need a documentation after that. It'll be, it'll be another, it'll be another investigation because this is a separate incident. So the evidence I'm referring to, documentation, Snapchat, whatever you have, press print of these later incidents, of those comments, of whatever you've seen that you've reported to law enforcement, that's the information that we need to see at this point.
Which I didn't, Ellen did, I didn't even know.
Okay, I would encourage, if anybody here has documentation, evidence that can help us, bring it forward please.
That's why I really wanted to come tonight, to speak about trying to get that guy to come down to talk to these kids, to try to get either them, because I'm scared that my son or any other child might push this, you know, and really do something.
The board is directing me to gather up some more information about this gentleman's program. I can whistle up my colleagues at Washington Academy. I'm sure I can put my hand on a description or a bio or something and be prepared to direct me to do something at our next meeting number 28.
Yes.
He does have a website, too, I believe.
Yeah, let's fast track this, this is nothing to mess around with.
Have any other public participation tonight?
I have one thing. I, I had talked, last meeting we had talked about the students walking outside in LCLC that, you know, there's a key there and that there's no problem with our kids walking outside. Well, I did talk to adults, I talked to a child that goes to the after-school program and they're still walking outside. And our weather is like 12, 13, 20, and I just don't see why this has to keep occurring. We have two adults that walk those kids down to the other end. Why those teachers, they always did have a key. And if that's not possible, then why can't we move our kids back up into the lyres? This isn't anything about adults.
So this happened twice since the last meeting?
That's what, now, I talked to a child and that's what the child told me. I mean, you know what? This is from last year, we're talking about the same things, the same, I don't know if it's a game with somebody, but the kids don't have to be outside, they don't have to. There's a door that they can go through to get to the other end.
The LCLC director, Sam Stavris, do you know anything about this?
So I know anything about this. I know that there had been a couple of occasions, the door hasn't been opened, but that, you know, they can ask to have it opened and the kids opened. They had it asked today, somebody came down and opened it, somebody just opened. I agree, it's a, it's a long issue, but I also, you know, kids aren't made of sugar and if they have to go outside because of some kind of issue, it isn't gonna be the end of the world, but...
But last, last meeting you said it'd be tough and you said it'd be difficult. You thought, I, I know on some days the door doesn't get open, but they can ask and it will get open. It's not...
Wanda?
But there's keys, it's so simple.
Okay. Is there someone down there at 2:00 when these kids are going back and forth?
Yes, I'm there, Tammy's there, sure.
Tammy has a key?
She gets one in the office, yep. She came and got mine today, I was in the meeting.
Okay, you can kind of keep on that and make sure that happens and it's truly weathered for little kids to go outside and stuff in rain and snow and stuff, so. Okay, I saw another hand, I don't know whose hand it was.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. So last week we were asked as a staff to review some community youth and collaborative institute experience surveys. And we did, and we had some opinions on that.
Okay.
So I wrote mine down so that I wouldn't forget anything. So if it's okay, I'll just read what I wrote.
Okay.
As per the school board's request, last year, the staff of Lebec Elementary School had the opportunity to attend professional development, which reviewed techniques and ways to reach out to the community. The same opportunity was offered to the community and utilized by a very small number of parents. This leads to the conclusion that the issue is with a very small group in the community and that staff is capable of interacting with the majority of parents and other community members in an acceptable manner. As a staff, we understand protocol and are familiar with procedures for handling a parent who has questions. The staff of Lebec Elementary has either had several years of teaching experience at public schools or has worked in a professional manner with the public and are practicing dealing with the community. I've been teaching for over 30 years and have been a primary classroom teacher for students ranging from grades one through six. I've also worked with students through the high school age in a professional manner. In my opinion, based on my extensive experience, the surveys could not possibly produce reliable results. The following are just some of the reasons I have come to this conclusion. The survey for teachers, for example, and staff, asked the respondent to answer questions about specific behaviors of the class as a whole. A sense of classes consist of several individuals, asking the teacher to generalize students' behavior as a group is an impossible task. Also, questions about the mental condition of a student. For example, if they're proud to be a student of Lebec Elementary School or if they feel bullied, if they feel safe at home, their eating habits, how many servings of fruit they have per day, et cetera. And their activity, for example, how much physical activity per day they get, are impossible for a classroom teacher to accurately answer. The student survey has some questions that ask children to state whether they feel sad, afraid, lonely, worried, or unnoticed. They're asked if they get in trouble in class, if they lie, if they are a bully, and if they have been bullied. They are asked if they feel like they belong to their families. They're asked if they feel like they don't matter, or if they feel like others don't like them. These questions will be interpreted by children in a variety of ways and will generate inaccurate results. Therefore, the answers to the questions cannot be quantified. The questions that are asked are extremely invasive and may have an extremely negative impact on children. Pointing out all the negatives in their life could start them obsessing on these negatives and overshadow the many more positives in their lives. For example, some kids may have never felt bullied, but might feel compelled to say they were and start thinking about incidents that could have been bullying. Also, they might feel very comfortable in their family situation until they're asked to evaluate the situation. Students should only be asked questions of this nature by a parent or a qualified professional, like their primary physician or psychiatrist or a counselor. A parent in the community stated that she doesn't think it's a good survey and if it makes it to her house, she's gonna throw it in the trash. We as the staff of Lebec Elementary School have completed the professional development training that the school board asked us to attend. Unless the school board can demonstrate a need for more action to be taken, we have fulfilled our obligation in this matter. The teachers at Lebec Elementary School are not in it for the money or for the prestige of being a teacher. We're in it for the kids. We want nothing more than the success for our students and for them to have pride in themselves, their family, and in their community. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other further, further public participation?
I have a letter from Connie Bagwell, she came in late, she asked me to read. She said, "My questions concerning the survey are about possible bias, purpose, how will the results be used, number of questions, phrasing of questions to the educational level of the participant, who will gather and write the results, how will the results be shared, what conclusions will be reached, what outlines will be discarded, the length of the surveys. She's wondering if the surveys are a can of worms and will create more problems than they seek to solve. Another thought is that often schools surveys are voluntary and students need to have permission from a parent or guardian. Half the students are savvy enough to understand how to answer some questions, but some may not be. It seems a bit much to ask young ones to speak. Is there another way to gather the information?" She feels that teachers are always happy to talk about any issues in person. So that was from Ms. Bagwell, who couldn't read in late. I know there's another letter out there somewhere that Debbie couldn't be here, it's only half a letter.
Good evening. This is, I'm going to read this on behalf of Debbie Bostic. I apologize that I could not attend tonight's meeting. Thank you for allowing this room to read my statement aloud. By now I'm sure you realize that the entire teaching staff has concerns about the survey that we have been asked to review and possibly complete. I can only assume that the survey is a product of concern that some feel that our school is not welcoming to the community and parents. This flawed survey is not needed. All the data you need is right in front of all of you. How many of you have attended sporting events at our school? If you have, you have noticed many enthusiastic stands filling the stands and fields. Parents, aunts, uncles, friends, people with no children. Our coaches give so much of their time to work with our young athletes. Believe me, these coaches are not doing it for the small stipend because as a coach, you usually go into the red before the season is over. What about our amazing volunteer boosters who work all day and then come to several games a week to make sure our athletes have the best program they can possibly have? Ask one of them how much money they bring in from concessions. We have an amazing sports program that would not be possible if our school and community were not working closely together. Ever attend a Christmas play or our state adventure performance, standing room only. Once again, these plays run smoothly because the staff can not only volunteer, but also fundraise all year long. Plus, we always have a bucket full of donations from our community after each play. Christmas Craft Day is always a fun-filled day for all due to community volunteers. We have seven craft stations and five of them are run by parents and community members. We have bus riders who have come out overtime to make sure our students get to school and their extracurricular activities safely. Then go above and beyond on their, on their bus to make it, make the kids morning start off on a positive note. Let's not forget our town garages, who draw off everything when we have a broken... Let's not forget our town garages who drop everything when we have a broken down bus, which we often do, to make sure it's back on the road as quickly as possible. The Rebecca Library is a wonderful resource for our school. Many volunteers come into our school to read aloud to our students. The RIV program is funded by community members and local businesses. Again, the library and community volunteers help distribute these books several times a year to every student. Thanks to our volunteers, the outing club provides our students with many experiences that many of our students may never have. The number of volunteers that walk the halls of the Rebecca School monthly are too great to mention in detail. Our teachers appreciate every volunteer that walks through our doors. I'm sure we all have countless stories and examples that show how well our school and community work together. Just ask them. I'm not suggesting that our school, teachers, administration, and students are perfect. We understand that there is always room for growth. I'm simply saying, let's start by looking at all the positive things that happen daily within our school and community and let's build upon them. We have sixty-five students enrolled currently in our school system. That means that there are a hundred and thirty parents total. How many parents have actually come to a meeting to complain minus that from the total number of, minus that from the total number of, number of parents? That includes a very small percentage of our parent population. The parents that are happy when the school system do not come to meetings because they are home spending time with their families after a long day of, long day of work. As for parents that have voiced their complaints, what were they about? Sports and administration, did they complain about the education their children are receiving daily? You, our board members, who do, uh, who, due to, excuse me. You, our board members, why do you choose to give up your time to be here? I'm sure it's not for the millions of dollars, uh, you're, you're making or the enjoyment of it. My guess is that you are here because you care about the children of our community. I'm hoping that you are not on the board because you have an axe to grind or chip on your shoulder. There is enough negativity in the world as it is. Even teachers of Rebecca are choosing to move forward and to rise above the negativity. We are out of, uh, we are in the business of educating children and providing a safe, loving, and understanding atmosphere for all children. I encourage you all to attend a school activity, visit our classrooms, or spend some time in the halls, listening to what takes place every day in our school. Our school is the heart of this community. No survey is needed to prove this. Thank you, Debbie Bostick.
Any further petition petition?
I'm not gonna read the whole thing because I think some of the things I have said have been said already, but I'm gonna read part of it. So, I question why Rebecca Board directors would want to put our students and families through surveys that ask such, leaving personal questions related to students and family's social and emotional health and wellbeing. My feeling is that question, such is the issue, we lack for individuals who can help with some mental health professionals and that has been said. As a teacher, I would not want to administer these surveys to my students, knowing what I would like to ask the parents of my students to complete such surveys. And I question, for what purpose? As a town resident and grandparent of students attending Rebecca School, current and in the future, I am horrified to think that our children and my grandchildren will be exposed to the questions in the survey or any other similar surveys. The culture of our school reflects the small-town culture of that. I feel that the school and the town does not need to be dragged through this themselves on our families' personal lives. I find this process to be insulting and intrusive to teachers, to students, and to families. My questions for the board to consider are, what can you do as a board to support our school, our teachers, our students, and our families as a whole? What result of conclusion is it that you want to achieve? Do you want to be a negative influence on the school or a positive supportive influence? In my opinion, this is not a positive step for our school.
Okay. Mr. Sartell, you have something to say?
Yes, I haven't seen the survey, the doctor, or anything. But it seems like they're all against the survey. But how do you really know how a kid feels if you don't ask? And if you are a teacher and you have a kid for a long period of time, you really know that child, why don't you give him a little bit more? Austin, make sure they understand. And as far as people coming forward, we would want them forward. I mean, I've been before. I do handle very good.
Any other? Debbie?
Uh, so, my thing on the survey, I have limited experience with, uh, working at the school for a couple of years. My background is actually in a lot of survey development and implementation, so I did a little research on the survey. And I think some of the concerns, or at least my concern, is we don't see a quantify, or we don't see outcome. What is the purpose of the survey? Last year, I sat through three or four professional development trainings where we spoke with the facilitator, we identified some priorities, we looked at what the positive element of the school, we looked at things we could improve on. Some of the things that we identified last year were communication. This year, we started working on last year, this year, we have a Pepsi, we have a website, we see better communication with the school. Um, there's ample opportunities, all those teachers have posted or told parents when they have their prep periods, when they're available after school, if they're available before school. So there seems to be a much better communication line, which I feel internally and externally, that one of those are one of the things that we looked at last year. We spent a lot of time looking at ourselves, providing feedback to each other about, okay, what can we do better? And we've done better. And I feel we're doing better. This year, we're looking at overall behavioral systems within the whole school system, which they're gonna talk about language communication on a level throughout the school. Those things I don't feel have been recognized or even looked at by any parents, or I'm not even sure if you're aware of what's going on. I have a copy of the last year's survey results. The things that we prioritized, we're working on them. If you look at the survey, the survey is out of the higher community collaboration model for school improvement. The school improvement is similar to the Corney School Help Program, minus the public health piece of it that's been implemented and actually been funded by the state of Maine. We've worked on it for ten or twelve years. There's five domains in that. There's academic learning, youth development, parent-family engagement support, health and social services, and community partnership. I don't know how much, or if you've researched this, it's a great survey. I love it. Problem is, it's intended for a much larger survey sample. We have a smaller survey sample than that, so you're looking at the possibility of kids being identified. So that's one of the concerns I have with it. The second concern is this survey is actually looking at, uh, a school, a, a program, a community program, which then looks at what are, who are the people in the community, what outside agencies are we gonna bring in to fill the gaps that we identify? What are the concerns? What are the priorities? You're looking at what's the bigger picture? Who's gonna implement this? Who's gonna identify their priorities? What services are you gonna bring in? We have a really robust health program, mental health program now because of our collaboration with Sunrise. We have a mental health worker coming in once or twice a week to see quite a few children that never liked physical services. We have a nurse now in the school system, so that looks at our, our health. We're addressing a lot of problems. The survey, I'm, I'm not concerned about the survey. What I'm concerned is, what are the issues? Why are we doing the survey? Again, how much time are we gonna have to spend away from other professional development that we can utilize daily to help our students communicate with us? What are the issues? If there's specific issues, let's just address them. Why go through all this, all these hoops? Once again, spend another whole year on it. What's the outcome? What is the purpose of that?
Many of my concerns are the same, sorry. And I have some notes here that I wrote too. Where did this originate and why, okay? And what is its intended purpose? Does this serve, is this use for any of the surveys for that purpose? Are there expected outcomes? Who knows? What are those outcomes? And can we maintain anonymity? Like she said, some of our classes, I have three kids, and they answer that survey. I mean, anybody in school can tell who that child is, all right? And there's seventy-nine questions on that, the second eighth graders. You answer one a minute, you get one period out of that. They're not gonna answer one minute. Second graders can't even answer. So it's, it's gonna take a long time. And these kids, seventy-nine questions, really, for a second grader? I mean, that's my understanding, second to eighth grade. It seems a little bit extreme. Like, we should target specific things, not just, uh, and how many more hoops are we gonna jump through of this, of this issue? I don't know what the issue is. That's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering. Why is this even being brought up? We did the same thing yes, last year, as she mentioned. We did what we were asked, now didn't get the right result maybe, now I wanna do it again. Next year, we're gonna do it again if you don't get what you want next time, whatever's coming. So anyways, I'm not a fan and I'm not disfrazed. I'll say that right now.
Well done.
I just, this is where I feel it came from, okay? In two thousand seventeen, we had a school board meeting and there must have been about twenty-five parents there that night. And we had a lot of parents that were upset with what was happening with sports and perhaps education in our school. Nonetheless, we had a lot of issues at that time. And one group that was contacted was the Maine Parent Federation, and they were willing to come down. And for some reason, Mr. Johnson changed that format. And this was gonna be, I believe, a vote student, and you changed it, Mr. Johnson. You had a friend from Jonesport come down.
Okay. I recall that meeting.
I recall it too, and I can go back on my minutes and bring it up to you.
Okay, let, let me answer.
As I reported regarding that request, and I'll say it again tonight. And we have folks here that will substantiate that, by the way. I visited a teacher meeting. I laid out the options for them. I gave them input into how that professional development would happen. So to say that I changed it just, just isn't accurate. Second thing, the person who did come is not a friend of mine. I know this person, I know this person professionally and is a former director of the consortium, in which is based in Magi. But to suggest that this person could not be impartial because we're friends, that's not accurate either, but continue.
Well, you took a different avenue with this, Mr. Johnson. But anyway, I want this board to know that there was a lot of parent petition that night with concern. Now, we voted on this last year. I was a board member, and we voted to do a survey. And I don't think anybody responded at that time. It wasn't a concern or an issue. So I don't know what's changed that it's now it's an issue. I mean, we, we've already had approved that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment. We saw the survey, that's what changed.
Excuse me?
We saw the survey, that's what changed. In my mind, that's what changed, by my.
I have been attending school board meetings for over twenty years. And I have sat through many school board meetings, and I do recall the school board meeting that we're referring to. And the hot topic of that night was definitely soccer. Went for the name on it. Soccer was the key issue that night. I personally, as a teacher and team member, didn't get a feel of those overwhelming academic concerns that night. There was heated tempers, there was opinions, and I value those heated, um, tempers and those opinions because every person does count. That did happen in two thousand seventeen. And as I said last year, and I'll say it this year, I am not saying our school is perfect. We're an institution where we make mistakes. Every institution makes mistakes. But if we keep going back to the same mistake two years ago, how are we ever going to move forward? I have to tell you, I'm sorry, I take pride in the job that I do with my kids. And I take pride in the lot of teachers that come to that building every day and do their job as well. Mistakes happen, but we learn from them. But to keep going back to two thousand seventeen, it was a learning opportunity. And I think a lot has moved forward and a lot has changed since two thousand seventeen. I have grown since two thousand seventeen. My problem with the survey is, I honestly am not trained to ask if I feel that one of my, um, students' families had mental health issues. I have not been trained to identify if my families have mental health issues. I honestly, it says my students have positive mental health. Mental health is a very serious illness, and sometimes I'm doubtful. So I might think some students in my room have fine mental health, but maybe they don't. So that, I have an issue with those type of questions that I am expected to fill out as a teacher. The other thing I have a problem with is, um, I don't have insight into someone's home. Nor am I gonna sit there and ask a student, like, "Do you have enough food on the table? Do your family fight? Do your, do your family use drugs?" I'm not going to do that. I'm not comfortable doing that. My job is to teach. My passion is to teach. So I find that the survey's a little bit awkward. And, and then we talk about the demographics, we talk about a small school, we're also a small staff. Most kids who know me know that if I have something to say, I'll own it and I'll take credit for it. But my demographics, I mean, you wouldn't, it wouldn't take much to identify me as proofed over the survey based on that demographics. So I'm just, that was my issue with the survey. And the other thing, it was supposedly to find strategies to build the school and community relationships. I don't get that feeling, and I, and no offense. And there was an issue of both two years ago and last year, and still to this last board meeting. It seemed, in situation, that there was a bias somehow, and we must have been part of that bias because we attended that professional development. But how do we know that the new person doesn't come to the table with some type of bias? I am in big favor of openly communicating with parents. I'm in big favor of communicating with community. I give my phone number to people. I have parents who contact me. I have community members who contact me. I see a lot of positive things. Every time I organize a Christmas Craft Day or Christmas, Twelve Days of Christmas wrapping for the business town, or parent conferences, or fundraising, or anything else, I'm speaking to parents, community members. And I feel that we have a very supportive relationship. So for me personally, I'm, I have to stand up and say, I am proud to teach the children of Rebecca. I feel that I work hard, as well as some of my, all of my colleagues, to provide a safe and secure learning environment. And if I really felt that this was conducive to my second-grade students to stand there and try to get them to answer seventy-nine questions, I might support this, but I don't think it's what's in the best interest of my children to try to get them to think about those heavy-duty issues. There must be other ways that we can tackle, um, problems without putting kids through seventy-nine questions that some of them they aren't even gonna understand. So I will tell you, um, as a joint union of teachers, um, and even the teachers who are not part of the union, there is no way that we feel comfortable administering the survey ourselves and administering the survey. It's why the kids are disappointed. Thank you.
Any other public participation this evening?
Where do you get a copy of those?
Excuse me?
Where do you get a copy of the survey?
They're not ready for public distribution right now.
I don't even know. They did one last year.
I, I was just wondering if everybody's aware that this is coming from a PhD professor who specializes in education and that the two sheets explain exactly what is happening. It isn't just like anybody.
Well, perhaps that PhD probably should administer this because I am not comfortable delving into personal problems. Kids come to school depressed periodically. Something may have gone on at home that morning. There may be a divorce pending in the family. There may be some drug problems. There's some domestic abuse. As teachers, we are not qualified to do the survey. That's what I'm saying with this. From a PhD, perhaps it shouldn't. I noticed on the bottom it said, "Social work." That's perhaps who should administer college of social work in the survey?
These surveys, we just got these last week. We didn't have a part in, um, in the questions at all.
But personally, I have a grandchild in school, and I feel like, you know, the world's corrupt enough as it is. I would not want her subjected to this type of questioning at school about her family, her family life, et cetera. If we have issues, we deal with them. We do have students that we have to, we, we are small enough that we can identify them through behavior, um, and other sources. We discuss it as a staff. We do a well, well check, wellness check on these students. And we usually report it to the proper people to take care of it. That's.
I believe the student questionnaire on this is an option, not a mandatory thing.
Okay, nice. I'm thankful for that, but then, like, my, what happens when the data's collected? You know, like, why put kids through this when we don't know what's going to happen with the data? It's almost like putting them through a DHS, uh...
It's almost like putting them through a DHS survey. They go through hell. They come out, you know, in tears and it's ruined their day. There are kids, there are some kids who live some rough lives.
Like I said, the student questionnaire is an option, which may and may not be utilized. It may not be given to the student.
Yeah, I would just say again, even beyond the survey, I think my question, as others have stated, what is the expectation of, what's the outcome of this? Which I'm still not clear about. And I'm not asking for an answer right now, but beyond the survey, that's my question. What are we looking for? And this is all said and done, what are we looking for?
Basically, the survey for this particular program, which we approved unanimously to get done, is to basically get a ten-thousand-foot overview of what's going on in the school. Things we are hitting on all eight cylinders, things that we really need improvement on, things that, you know, we could tweak a little bit here and there, to make sure that this school is the center of the community.
Let's hear your hand.
So my suggestion would be that instead of looking at all five domains, because this, I assume the school's not gonna be implementing any programs, building collaborations within those five domains. And I could hit them off again, their rate and the website, if you do have the scoot over where the survey came from, then maybe pick an outcome. Because I think the concern of the teachers, what's the issue? Is the issue from an argument about a sports program two years ago and children and, or is it academics? And what is the expectation? What is the expectation of the teachers who are there to educate? What are we trying to get at? What is the outcome? Build the survey on the concerns of what you wanna know about versus just throwing something out there because it was validated through a college university that synthesizes hundreds of kids and hundreds of teachers versus, what, eight teachers? How many teachers are there? Ten teachers in this, whatever there are? It's, you know, we wanna improve. We wanna collaborate. But this doesn't feel like a collaboration. And this doesn't feel like something positive that we would like to participate in because of the way it's being presented and because of the fact that we don't know what the outcome is. What questions are we trying to answer? Where is the kind of stuff? That's what we wanna know, basically, in our show.
Do you have any answers for that?
Well, I can say that this is quite a regular thing in a lot of schools, not because there is a problem, because it promotes a healthy environment. Major companies do it, education departments do it. You purchase something, you get a survey, not because they wanna know how they're, you know, that they're doing bad, but because that information is very helpful in, like Frank said, tweaking something. Really saying, hey, this is really going well. And this is, you know, a real positive influence on the school versus, you know, there's some issues in this, and here's some ideas, and here are some recommendations. But it doesn't, this doesn't mean that, hey, there's a big, huge problem. We have to go for it. This is a healthy thing for any education environment to do. And it did start stemming from that, but it isn't, hey, we're gonna get you guys. We're gonna go out and remove all this information. This is not a biased thing.
And I understand that. And I love surveys. And I love research. And I love outcomes and I love priorities. Don't get me wrong. But last year, we did this. We identified positive things that were going well. We identified things that we thought we could work on, and we're working on them. We did this all last year. We provided time through, or we gave up our professional development time to work on this. We had focus groups. I think there are a couple members of the focus groups of parents are sitting right here. There were, what, five parents to show up to the focus groups? We had one survey filled out. That was the community input they were going on. So we provided feedback to ourselves. We looked at ourselves. We looked at how we were functioning. We came up with some positives. We came up with some things to work on. We're working on it. Are we have to do it again? I think that's the issue that we're getting at. What are the issues? Is what is the outcome? Is there anything besides the things that we're working on? Shall we work on this for another year or so? Let the change happen? And then come back and look at it. I love surveys. Personally, that is. There's only so much time in a day that we can pick them. We pick our priorities. And we're working on it.
You have a question?
You know, Alodi, you guys did this, but Mr. Johnson never presented anything to us as he was supposed to?
Oh, I don't know the process. All I know is that we received and we identified things. I'm sure something, I have the documents, I'm sure that the school could also receive a document of what we were working on.
You know, if he could have brought it to the board.
The board couldn't have, the board, if the results weren't provided, why didn't the board ask for results? If it was that pertinent? If it was that important, then why didn't somebody ask him for a report? I mean, this is getting just so ridiculous, this whole thing. We are all in it.
I don't think we've gotten nothing through anything about this.
Well, I'm sorry, but that should have been directed from the board, I guess, you know.
Michelle, if you weren't at, you were not present at subsequent board meetings, as I recall, I can check, but I don't think so.
No, I wasn't.
The entire, the entire experiment, I would call it, that first evening was dismissed on the basis of bias. And we were directed, I say we, the school board voted literally a second time to ask me to generate another list, which I did. But that first evening on parent Title I A parent involved in the night, we piggyback to try and improve the rate of attendance by our community members, that entire event was dismissed on the grounds of bias.
Based on what that's though?
Based on certain people, based on certain people in the community, whether it was parents or teachers who weren't comfortable with the person who was brought in.
So as Mr. Johnson spoke, he went to a teachers' meeting. He provided three people to work with. Teachers, and I correct you, chose who you wanted to work with? And we worked with her. I mean, I don't want to sit here for a woman of a vass either. I mean, he did go to teachers, and he did do a presentation. And he brought three names to staff.
We did our due diligence. I feel, God, we have our priorities.
That night?
And I didn't know any three on any of the things on my...
Neither I.
Question?
Well, I'm pretty convinced by what I'm hearing from the teachers. It's a pretty unanimous voice that we're hearing. I would love to build in a structure where every three months, every four months, we get a report back on the things that are being worked on in the school. You know, how it's going, what you need from us, what, you know, what's working, what isn't working. Build something into the structure so that we're, you know, no one feels like they're in the dark about what's going on. But I found a lot of things to question in the surveys as well. But mostly, I'm convinced that it's not necessary.
I agree with the concerns that were raised. I read through it. There's a lot that seems intrusive, a lot that seems unnecessary, and a lot that seems inappropriate for me too. I agree also with Melissa that getting some feedback from the teachers on a regular basis, for me, would be immeasurably helpful.
Okay, any other further public participation this evening? Yes?
The incident that we were talking about with the teacher that had come that night, if my knowledge did it, I was one of them that was there. And I walked out because it was supposed to be, we went in there, a teacher came, one of the teachers came in. She wanted us to sign her name down. I mean, I'm not gonna sit and she was calling people by name that are here, you know? And to me, that's what I felt, was, I can't sit and say something, especially when someone keeps coming in the room and came in the room, when this was all supposed to be for us to share and not for it to be so public where people could come in and out. And she's referring to Mr. Johnson as Ken. And she's referring to other people by their first name. So I walked out. And I feel that just because I went and voiced my opinion that I was not leaving my, I can't remember what Ms. Murphy said, that, Ms. Vossette said, just because I went, that I was taking away from my family time. Now, I was trying my best to do what I could to help my son. And I take offense to that. And that's why a lot of parents did not come. And because it was, you had to write your name down, the door was open, she was calling people by their first name, and people came into the room. How can anyone feel comfortable discussing something?
Good.
You know, that's, but I'm trying to get past that. I just want this fulgurated issue.
Very good. Any more public participation this evening? Just speak up, please.
That was also in that meeting that night. And there was just three parents.
Yes.
Person that was picked by the teachers. And we told they were picked by the faculty. There was a board member in there that was a parent also. And that person was very surprised that they had picked this person because it was supposed to go to the school board. And the school board totally skipped over that night. And we just had this person that was given to us by the faculty who picked her. So, yeah, we felt that, as I believe if you looked at the school board meetings, you'll see that it was discussed to get outside of Angor for someone from way outside. And this person worked with one of the administrations, and she called by first name, and that person walked into the room when we were having a meeting. So, yeah, we felt like it was kind of a setup. You know, it was not, it felt biased. It did feel biased because it was that she worked with one of your administrations. She told us that. And that we, in the school board meeting, it was said that, you know, you were gonna look for something beyond Angor, someone from way, way outside that would come in, not being influenced by working with other people in the area or anything, just to have a very open mind and look at everything objectively, not subjectively. And that's where I felt, I thought I just dropped my name on all these things because you guys know who I am anyway. I mean, it's, there was no anonymity to anything. I mean, everybody knew everybody. And the faculty picked this person.
Okay. Just the clarification.
That's what we were told.
Just the clarification, the directive from this board to pick somebody from the outside was made after that original meeting with the first facilitator. But the board did make that directive, and I did generate a list on it.
Okay, any further? To consider approval of the January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen School Committee Minutes as written with corrections as recommended by the superintendent of schools. I've got a copy in front of me. I've got a couple extra to read. I'll write it down next month. Okay, when you're ready, I'd like a motion on that, please.
I'd like to suggest that...
Okay, correction?
Letter G number one, it says, "No action was taken inside of this table," but I went back and looked at it. I'd like it to say this action was taken and the board requested it be put on the next agenda.
Under which one?
G number one. Here's the line, the general question.
G, G one?
I could have an extra copy of this minute.
Yes.
Okay, any other corrections or implications?
With that, French, I'll move to the board.
Okay, a second on that motion?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Principals report.
Mr. Ashby would like to start teaching some paddle games in his phys ed class. He put out for his class for a ping pong table. And a person who graduated from U-Bac has donated a new ping pong table and the paddles and the balls to go with them. And that is here in the library, which is his health classroom. Kids are having fun with that. We did have the sheriff department down with a drug dog and also a search and rescue dog. Same dog, just two different dogs. And hopefully in the spring, when the weather's better, he'll actually come back and show the dog working. The dog went into all classrooms, came through eight. We have some start...
No drugs?
Nope, no drugs. Nobody was lost. Start testing. This time it will be students in red and yellow. Those are the students who receive extra time. That's seven fifteen to quarter of eight. That'll be done the week of February twenty eighth. The proficiency-based education team, even though that is not a thing that the state's doing, you don't have to have that special report, parent to graduate, so on, so forth. I'd spoken earlier in the year that the strategies that come from that, teachers are still using it. And that is actually how the Fred Jones, which is next, training came about. That is something that we looked at in terms of classroom management, and we all wanted to say, hey, using the same strategy. So that is a result of that. And that was done by survey. And then we do have Fred Jones, February twenty seventh. We should be finishing up session seven, maybe getting into eight. It's a video, it's a question, and then it's an actually, get up and move and practice some of those techniques. The women's club have brought us two readers in grades one and two. They come once a week now to read the bad children. Certainly helps their self-esteem for those that struggle a little bit. And then, just to bring to your attention something to think about, in light of storm days, they've talked about the March workshop day, that perhaps that could become a regular student day on a Friday, and teachers would go to school on Saturday and do Fred Jones or something. But this is just a heads up. That's something that they've talked about. And that's my report.
Okay. School committee report. Anyone have anything from the school committee? Bad or unprojected yet? I have a question, and maybe we can talk about this at another time. But there was a day a few weeks ago, and I don't recall exactly what day it was, might have been about three weeks ago, where there was something going on at Pembroke School. What was going on at Pembroke School? You were up there, and Ms. Murphy was up there.
Yes, that was a review of the PTEC document. And for those of you not familiar with that acronym, that's the acronym that's used as part of the Teacher Evaluation System, as well as Principal Evaluation System. We have a steering committee with representation from all of the schools on that particular group. And that's what Mike is alluding to.
And the reason I asked you about this is because you were out of the building, and you were out of the building in another professional development, like down the university somewhere where you were.
Growth mindset, yes.
Okay. So my question came up was, when you're out of the building... Okay. So, my question came up was, when you're out of the building, for whatever reason, like the professional development, or let's say you're sick, you're, won't sit, but you, you know, glad to be able to get hospitalized or something, who is in charge?
I have three or four go-to. Ms. Murphy, could be Ms. Street, sometimes, well, Ms. Mitchell. It was there one day a couple of years ago and we had a strategy.
But do we have anything in writing to where we have?
I don't.
Do we know who's in charge? And is that particular person off people that you have on your go-to list, are they recognized as an administrator?
No, I'm the only administrator in the board with administrative certifications that I need.
Yes.
No, I'm the only administrator.
Yeah, I had a question about that because I, I think, I, I don't know, were you up that day too, Anna?
Yeah, we were in growth mindset. See, what happened was his date got changed because your presenter couldn't come. We weren't supposed to be out on the same day.
Okay.
That's what happened.
So, so, that, that's what I had in question. And, you know, we don't have anything in writing and stuff and it's kind of like roosie goosey or whatever. It's like, who's in charge? And is there anyone in the building other than a teacher that can be considered administrator or someone second in command?
Yes. It's like, Mr. Ashby.
Oh.
Is considered an administrator. Often, often referred, often we refer to him as, uh, an athletic administrator or an athletic director. However, that is a recognized administrator, stick to the state. And just so you know, the athletic director in Eastwood is third in the chain of command. Just to be honest.
Is that, I'm sorry, the question?
Well, I was just, you know, and that brings up a point of, you know, if there was an emergency in the school, a medical emergency, you know, something from the outside, a threat from the outside, something that everybody prepares for and everything, are these teachers qualified to know the direction exactly? As an administrator, you know, who do you call and the proper procedures?
All the crisis response plan. When Tina's absent, so-and-so checks in and so-and-so's absent, that's all the crisis response plan. They're not certified administrators, because I don't have them. I mean, I've got, if that teacher's on the bus that needs me for gonna evacuate without a license, get on it, go, we'll figure out the consequences later.
Take the fine later.
We don't have that type of personality.
Okay, so, but I, I, I just was questioning like, who's in charge? Who, I mean, do we have something documented? Do we have something in place, you know, that, you know, we can refer to if, you know, for whatever reason you are out and we have something happen at the school and, you know, no one knows who's in charge. So, and then we have, uh, you know, an administrator, now, I mean, it could be Mr. Ashby because he would be recognized by the state, you know, in that case there. So, I would say that might be a good idea to have that done. Okay, but the other thing I had cameras, we, we talked a couple of weeks ago about cameras. Can we get another quote on anything?
I did indeed make contact with, uh, Mr. Fieldman and he told me that he would be contacted in Tina. He had the flu right when I had him on the phone, but indicated that he would. And to my knowledge, he did not follow up. So, we still only have the one quote.
If we give him another jingle and say, you know, oh, look, you know, you're looking at getting something done here. If you're not interested, let us know.
Yeah.
And, um, that's what I have. Any else from the school board have anything they wanted to add?
Superintendent's report.
Couple of quick items this evening. Um, first, I'd like to appoint Jesse Blake as the boys' P V basketball coach for the upcoming season. Lease agreement with the Regional Medical Center. I presented that, uh, in its draft form to this board last time. I didn't hear the board, uh, get anything back to me and nothing was mentioned under the school committee report. But if you're comfortable with that, I did get a call from Marilyn who was interested in just getting the eyes dotted and the Ts crossed and she's looking for a signature. But if you're comfortable with that, you need to, you need to let me know and I can sign it. Last thing about our report this evening, and this is pertinent for our agenda. I'm sorry to say that there are no subsidy figures available yet from the state. Uh, when I put your agenda together on page two, you can see discussion first draft of Move Back School Department proposed budget pending availability of subsidy figures. There are no subsidy figures available from the state yet. State bid tomorrow as the last date and it looks like they'll be true to their word. So, at this point, under agenda adjustments, I'll be recommending that we delete that particular item because, you know, no subsidy figures. That's all I have on my report for this evening.
Okay, so we get the adjustments to the agenda. Any more adjustments to the agenda? Old business? And a new business, to consider establishing a job description of the IT coordinator. Should we have a copy of that?
I do, and there are a couple of things that I'll call your attention to and that document circulate. So, what you see here on the front page, you know, to me, I'm fine with this. My questions circulate around, um, what's on page two where it says additional information. The last, what would call, what really gets my attention is availability to work outside of normal business hours on occasion as needed. Because of the structure of this position, we could not impose upon the person that's satisfying this requirement. We could not impose upon them unreasonable hours that would be beyond the teacher's contract because that person's primary employment is determined by the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, now, it has been my experience that those who work in our schools are very conscientious and if we had an emergency, I have no doubt that, uh, that person would be able to take care of us. However, putting that in a job description, probably, uh, in my opinion, I don't think that would be appropriate because it would contradict the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, and the second clause, and the second sentence right below that, uh, disposition which will require services on an as-needed basis and may require work beyond the normal business hours. Administrative contracts or the administrative positions, um, frequently have kind of what I would refer to as an elastic clause like this. Uh, I, we have administrators that come in on Saturday or Sunday if they have to meet a delivery person or whatever the case may be. And it's kind of expected to some degree for an administrative position that you have to do the little things and they have to get done. Uh, but the employee we have performing these services, uh, works off a teacher's contract. So, with that being said, my recommendation to this board, if we think this document is close, and I believe that it's close, that's my personal opinion. I think we're zeroing in on a viable job description for this position. If you think we're close, I can take this document, have a meeting with the employee and if everything is good to go, I think we can get it approved at the next time. So, but I need some feedback from this board. Do you, does this board believe that we're close?
No. I think this is way too much to expect from a person. I thought that it was supposed to be somebody that just puts out the fires and makes the calls to the professional, somebody in-house. Not that, because this is a lot to expect from somebody inside the school. I, I don't know that we would have somebody that could fulfill this inside the school. I, we're looking for, I, I, not we, um, my thought was the most competent person in computers. Not somebody that's an expert, just somebody that, you know, knows more than some other people. And it's just put out the fires, make the call. Somebody that knows how to do that. And, um, but to provide training, to oversee, um, other people. I, I understand where this is coming from, but I thought the position was much more simplistic. I thought this was, I, I'm just briefly running through it, but I thought this is.
Let me address that.
Okay.
Because this is coming from her own description of what she does.
This is coming from the person at once?
Yes. She provided a description of what she does and I took those and, and came up with this list. She does a lot.
Yeah, I know. It seems like a huge amount of responsibility.
Can I suggest?
I was just worried. I don't wanna overburden somebody.
No, I agree. Maybe meet with her and see if in fact this is way beyond what she would be comfortable agreeing to. I agree with the normal hours and especially if it's gonna violate the teacher's contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I would be perfectly willing to meet with that employee. And like I said, I mean, that employee, very conscientious, if there's a problem, I've got complete faith that she'd go above and beyond, but I just don't think we should codify that.
No, that's fine. And if there are other things in here that she feels are beyond the scope of the position, let's take them out.
I know that there is some work that has to get done over the summertime because all them L T I laptops, iPads, whatever, have to be re-imaged every summer. Um, so, she did do that. She came in last summer and did that. And, and this doesn't address the big thing. It's like the solar crashes or whatever. Now, I have called these board on several occasions and I have not seen them this full year, in Zoidgaville. Well, that's a bigger issue if we have something big get out and they build a lift.
Well, that, um, the idea for that would be this paragraph here. Position would like the, the ability to recognize those problems and be very skillful and contact the appropriate specialist.
Yeah.
That was the point of that.
Okay, yeah. I, I think one of the things was is that, that that person will have a list of contacts.
Yeah.
And, and that'll be in the office available and that they'll be regularly available so that we already have that preset.
Sure.
Identified by this person, which they would know.
What is the correct protocol for getting hold Nathaniel and having him respond? Is it go through you?
It doesn't, usually it doesn't go through me. Uh, I, I know Tina's got Nathaniel's email address and I believe all the principals do.
Can't be those.
And, and my involvement comes when I get the one pager that documents his number of hours multiplied by the hourly rate and, and I sign to approve that. And he doesn't need to, uh, to double check his scheduling with me. But if, however, if his availability, if you haven't been able to get through it, that's something I, that's something I need to be aware of.
But I don't wanna throw him under the bus because you guys had a huge issue when you got dangerous and all that stuff.
But I mean, the only time we probably utilize this service anyways is because, I mean, if it had something to do with it, maybe it was completely in the office because it was on Apple. Or maybe it's a kind of, you know, any connect system or that thing failure or whatever, so.
We had, oh, another question. I put it in there, but I don't know how necessary it is. Do they really need a main driver's license?
Probably not.
Don't worry, he's got one already.
They were ahead of school every day. The background check, I think, would, would cover that one.
Unless it was someone from, out of my school, it wasn't our, you know, given a Cory check, so.
I mean, having a satisfactory driving record, if they have a license, I think is valuable. But what if they live a half a block away and don't need a car and don't have a license?
Don't need a driver's license to operate a computer.
No.
So, I just have a question. This is, so, we're just looking at the one person who pretty much did a lot last year and everything. And it, you could go to that person and make sure that they're comfortable with this language. I just am worried. I don't want somebody to overburden because it's not a whole lot of money. We're not expecting an expert. We're just expecting somebody to assess, put out the fire, I, not we, me. And that's what I thought it was, to assess, put out the fire and make the call and have that list of people that are qualified to do that. It's just a first responder.
Right, but my sense to matter is that if this employee or any other employee feels overwhelmed for whatever reasons, in my experience, that they communicate that, they, they'll, they'll let somebody know.
I don't want them to be bound by it. I just consider them.
I mean, the other, the other thing that is possible, if we, if we can get a document, uh, this year, you know, it can be tweaked as we go. So, uh, I don't expect this to be the final word. If we do, if we do a bang-up job and there's mutual understanding and it works well, I guess it can be. But my point is if things develop in the future, if there's a person that feels overwhelmed, if the demands become greater, which is an equal, is an equal possibility, uh, we can revisit it.
One thing, I don't know, I could read through this. Does it say it's an in-house employee? This isn't an outside employee. This is somebody that's already in the building.
Yep.
That is putting out the fires in the building. It's not somebody that lives outside and comes in, somebody that's in, that's what I thought this position was, in-house.
Right.
So, is that, I don't know, is that in here, that they're in-house employees?
No, because what is the case this year may not be the case next year. This is a job, it's not describing the specific individual.
Could be a retiree in town that does it, not in-house, not a teacher in-house, so.
I'd like to make a note of that.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move to continue this agenda item and bring it back for the following week. After meeting with the person currently doing these, uh, doing the job and, and adjusting it as necessary.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, so we're gonna bring it to the person and have him hook it over and if it's good to go, we'll bring it to the next reading on the agenda. All in favor? Consider signing the R M C L lease for space for the school nurse. I looked at it over. I didn't find anything that was like out of, right, out of whack. You know, as long as any kind of, you know, improvements and something like that that they're gonna do, they can refund it. Okay, it's not gonna affect the structure of the building and something like that. I'm sure it's gonna actually improve the, the facade down there, so. Get that done, so. Any more motion on that? Any comments on that?
I'll move to a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, I just wonder about the six-year term when there's funding for two, for two years. And I understand why the medical center would want that, to have some continuity. And I think that school would want six years of the school nurse or longer. But it feels funny to decide now to sign a six-year lease when we've got funding for two years.
I could foresee if they didn't get funding, if they didn't anticipate funding after the three-year period, that the deal would be locked. Unless they want to put a nurse in there again.
Is it possible to put language in there, subject to financing? This, uh, you know, this six-year lease, subject to grant funding or something?
Or funding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you would like to amend the motion on the floor?
Is it, let me, let me ask this question for, because, uh, Marilyn, Marilyn will ask me. In, in the actual lingo, is it easier to just reduce the term from six to two to match the funding stream?
Other ways, just an exit clause, subject to funding, something that allows us to get out and not be obligated, but, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, either party determined this on a hundred and eighty based on this.
That's good point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we should be covered.
Yep. So, the motion stand is proposed. There is a second on it. No further discussion? All in favor?
Can I ask how often the nurse would be around?
Every day.
Five, five a week.
Really?
Eight to four.
Wow, that's good, really good.
Okay, to consider adoption of the policy J S Suicide Prevention Intervention and Response. This is that very indepth. Now, the training for people to recognize this and so on like that, is this something that's ongoing already?
Since you mentioned training, uh, there may be an opportunity in the pipeline. At the Perry Board meeting, there was a member of the Perry Board who works at the Community College. And she indicated that there was somebody at the Community College who is certified to give the training. Uh, this is a requirement now. Uh, the state has amended the law. It's not enough to have one per district. You don't have to have somebody united at the building level. So, by adopting the policy, we're in compliance, obviously, but it is very much on my radar to take advantage of that opportunity. And if we can get that scheduled this spring, I'll get the word around and we'll do, we'll do a larger district-wide training and potentially you can see people from all over the county. Because I did not know that the Community College had somebody that was trained to give the training, trained to give the training. Yeah, uh, so I will. So I will, I'll get that around.
Okay, you have a motion on that, to adopt the policy JS Suicide Prevention Intervention and Response.
I'll move.
Okay, a second on that? Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor? Consider the first draft of 2019, 2020 AOS 77 school calendar. This is the AOS calendar, correct?
That is, that is the intent that all of the schools follow the same calendar. However, it has been, it has been regular experience that there are always some local tweaks.
Darn town, who's that all the time?
It's not, it's not just New Beck. I've had local tweaks at about every town in various years. Just to go through the calendar, this version has teacher workshop days on Wednesday and Thursday, August 28th and 29th, with first student day being the Tuesday after Labor Day, which is September 3rd. October, we have the Harvest of Ideas Teacher Workshop Day on the 15th. Early release days in November for parent-teacher conferences and Thanksgiving. You can see where Christmas falls in December. Christmas is on a Wednesday for school year 1920. February and April vacations, as you would expect. We have a workshop day in March typically just to break things up, and everybody circles that one. Because if we have a harsh winter next year, many times that March workshop is replaced with a student day. And it helps with make up snow days. All things being equal, with five snow days built in, last student day would be June 17th. If we have a light winter, or the school days are made up some other way, the final student day would be the 9th, or the half-day for the kids, and a workshop day on the 10th for the teachers.
Very similar to what we had this year. We actually opted to go to the Monday, to the Tuesday after Labor Day. And that was the only major change that we had from last year and stuff. Because if you had the kids sat in on Thursday, and then that Thursday, Friday, and a Monday holiday, so.
Is that what you have in mind?
I didn't, no, I didn't. We were teaching in their contract, but they have input into it. They were good with that. The only thing I'd already spoken with Kenny is we don't do a second parent-teacher conference night. We have a keeping literacy alive night, which we're still working with here, if it's just not a conference night. And it's generally two weeks before that. But that's, that's the end.
And those are the types of local tweaks that you can make in the other terms, too. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a barrier to adopting the calendar.
Okay. Any questions, any discussion, any?
Just the first draft tonight, I know this is the first time you've seen it. So if you'd like to just accept the first draft, you can spend some time with it and visit it again next time.
So the teachers are good with it? So, and make a motion to accept the first draft of the calendar for next school year. Second? All in favor? And we're not going to discuss school budget because we couldn't get the state subsidies in. Number six, to consider entering into the executive session pursuant statutory citation, one MRSA, SS 405, 6D, to discuss negotiations with the principal. And a motion on that.